Good evening, I'd like to call this Thursday, May 10th, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Please rise and join me for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the General Counsel please call the roll?
President Cobb.
Here.
Vice President Viall.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Hines.
Here.
And is Director Leon excused?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item four, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
May I move adoption?
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments about the agenda? All those in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, recognition of Wilson High School seniors, Danavia, oh, Danavia Holmes and Nicholas Lay and their City of Destiny Awards in the Youth Service and Youth Leadership categories.
Thank you, President Cobb and members of the board. Each year since 1987, the City of Tacoma honors adult and student volunteers for their contributions to the livability and betterment of Tacoma with City of Destiny Awards. For the last several years, the city's Events and Recognition Committee has selected students from Wilson High School who have distinguished themselves for their community service, and this year is no exception. I'll give you some specifics about these two honorees in a moment. First, I would like to call both of them forward, Wilson High School seniors, Danavian Holmes and Nicholas Lay. So I'll, I'll share with you some excerpts from the award nominations. First, Danavian Holmes volunteers as a police explorer who has encountered the homeless and downtrodden during his service. He feels it is important to engage them in conversation that they have a need to be heard. On more than one occasion, Danavian has shared his lunch with a stranger. It's not typical for a young person to sit down with an unkempt homeless person and share a simple meal, but this is a testament to Danavian's character. He comes from poverty himself and can identify with the plight of those he meets on the street. Danavian and his family make a point to serve meals at the Catholic Community Services Hospitality Kitchen. And at Thanksgiving particularly, Danavian witnessed the appreciativeness of those he served. As an ROTC cadet, Danavian has participated in many community service projects and was able to learn and grow through the grief of others. Danavian is a success story. His father deserted the family when he was young, leaving his mother to raise him and his siblings. There was plenty of opportunity to go down less successful pathways, but Danavian chose the high road of service to others. Please honor 2018 City of Destiny Award winner, Danavian Holmes.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking the board by giving me this award. I wasn't expecting it, honestly, but I'm so happy to have it now. An honor. I'd like to also thank my mother and my great administrations as well as my ROTC instructor. They're all here. They're some of the biggest players in the things that I've accomplished in the last few years. Sorry about cutting off your applaud, but without them, I don't think I'd be able to, you know, be where I am now and be taking the steps that I'm taking in this next year or so. So, thank you for everybody. After high school, well, I've recently enlisted in the Marine Reserves. So I leave August 6th for boot camp, come back at, come back in late January, and then off to college for me, there it is, you know? Thank you.
They'll come up together.
Our second honoree, Nicholas Lay, has been a fixture at Point Defiance Elementary School spending countless hours reading to kindergarten and first graders, brightening the day for countless students. As an Eagle Scout, Nick spearheaded playground projects at Point Defiance. He helped construct a 24-foot by 24-foot chessboard, which was an incredible teaching tool that allowed second graders to increase their math skills. Nick procured all the materials at no cost from generous donations from Ace Hardware and Home Depot. Nick also volunteers at the Morgan Family YMCA and has made a positive impact on the lives of many young people through the Kids Night Out Program. Leading by example, Nick continues to pay it forward through his efforts with the Fish Food Bank. As he delivers food boxes during the holiday season, he witnesses residences with multiple beds in one room, dilapidated homes, tattered dirty clothes. Despite this, he enters each residence with a cheerful smile and friendly greeting. He is rewarded with tears of joy and hugs and kisses from extremely grateful people. Nick's character and attitude is beyond reproach. He continually emulates the honesty, loyalty, ethics, and dedication he has for school and community service to all. Nick's passion for helping the less fortunate in our society is reflected by his Eagle Scout dedication, promoting honor, integrity, putting others first, love of country, and of course, his belief in God. And I'd be remiss not to note that Nick is the son of our very own Downing Elementary School Principal, Olga Manos. Please honor 2018 City of Destiny Award winner, Nicholas Lay.
So I'd like to first off, thanks to the board for having me tonight and giving me this opportunity to receive this award. Thank you guys again. I would also like to thank my, my mom for being there and being the principal and always picking on me when I was a kid. I'd also like to thank Ms. Ray and Mr. Berset for being here and like to, like to wish Berset the best in retirement and hope he has a great life after education. Thank you, guys. And then I'm also going to Western, Western University, hoping to pursue a business degree in somewhat shape or form. Thank you.
And once again, I just want to congratulate Danavian and Nicholas and wish you both the best in your next steps. So moving on to number six, Superintendent's Report, and we have Pierce Transit here with us.
Yes, we'd like to have, ask Alexandra Mather to come up. We have a great relationship and partnership with Pierce Transit and work well. They often come to our CAD meetings and talk to us about what's going on. So it's a pleasure to have you here, Alexandra, to talk about what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It is such an honor to be here and so hard to follow that. Wonderful presentation. Those two young men are outstanding. Okay, so my name is Alexandra Mather. I'm the Government and Community Relations Officer for Pierce Transit, and I come before you tonight to talk to you about Pierce Transit's biggest infrastructure project we've ever taken on, and that is the Bus Rapid Transit Line that will run from downtown Tacoma down to the Spanaway Walmart. So first, I want to kind of frame for you guys what BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, is. It's essentially light rail on wheels. So it allows it to be nimble so that it can run smoothly no matter where it is running. You know, there's different densities along the corridor, and BRT allows us to, you know, build up the infrastructure so that it meets the demands of the area it's serving. So it's a really wonderful thing. So like light rail, only on wheels, and some characteristics of BRT is it has eight to 10-minute frequencies, off-board fare collection. So it allows people to get on the bus, and then as they're leaving, they tap, or they get off the bus and tap their card, and then they move on, which allows the buses to have about 20-second dwell times. It has level boarding platforms so that people can get on really quickly with their bikes, their strollers, wheelchairs. And the shelters are also characteristic of BRT. They are well-lit and they have real-time signage, and they are a more welcoming area. People like to sit and wait for the bus. So we're really happy about that. So this BRT corridor, that's a picture of the whole corridor. As you can see, it starts up at South 9th Street in Tacoma, goes around down Market, and then it will come in turn and go down through the Dome District and the Tacoma Dome Station, one of the largest regional transit hubs in the Pacific Northwest. And then it will come down, as you can see, down SR 7, down to the Spanaway Walmart. So this corridor, this is currently the Route 1. And as we know, the Route 1 serves up to TCC, but this part of the corridor experiences 3,500 boardings a day. So we know that it has robust ridership, and it will serve a lot of people very well. These are the demographics of the corridor. I don't necessarily need to go through all those, but we just know that we're serving a great need along this corridor, and that makes us feel very good and excited. Project timeline, in 2017, we launched our feasibility study, which we are still in right now. We have held over 20 public meetings and listening sessions. The next phase is we are going before our board with a locally preferred alternative, and I'll go over what that is. It's a very wonky planning term. And then we will be going to the Federal Transit Administration this fall and submitting our Small Starts Grant. The funding for the project, we have secured 15 million from Connecting Washington in the 2015 Transportation Package, and we secured 60 million from the ST 3 package. This project is one of Sound Transit's early deliverables in the ST 3 package, so we're really excited to be leading the way on that front. And then the whole project cost is 150 million. So we'll be going to the FTA for that remaining 75 million. And, you know, we don't always know what's going on at the federal level these days, but we are hopeful that we will be successful in securing that fund. And, actually, I'm going to go back one. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Okay, so when we started this study, we looked at several different ways that we could address the corridor. And it's kind of dark, but the different options were the enhanced bus, BRT, streetcar, and light rail. We know that we wanted to see a project sooner than later, so light rail, as we know, takes a while, so we didn't go for that option. The streetcar, also very expensive. We wanted to not be spending those, that amount of money. The, the enhanced bus is good, but it doesn't have the treatments that BRT does. And so especially the traffic does, or I'm sorry, the bus doesn't really leave normal traffic. And so it doesn't necessarily speed up the arrival times of the bus. So that's why we landed on BRT. And we can see there that the range and cost per mile is four to 20 million, which we have, people have pointed that out. And basically, it just means whatever different treatments are along the corridor at a time. It's a very nimble, a nimble machine. So, you know, some treatments will cost more than others. So this is an intersection, as is. This is where the locally preferred alternative comes in. This is, there's two options. There's the bat lanes, which is this, then the median running lane. So the bat lanes are business access transit lanes. And what that does is it is for buses and for cars that are turning into a business or turning right. So those vehicles by nature are slowing down. So what it does is it takes those slower vehicles out of the main flow of traffic so that those general-purpose lanes can continue to move at a speedy rate. And then this is the median running lane option, and the same. It is primarily just bus in those lanes. I do want to reiterate that none of the proposals we have take away any general-purpose lanes. And that's just kind of a slice of the different options. One of the things about the median running lane that people really like is its sense of permanence. Having that station in the middle of the road really establishes a presence there. And so we're hearing from a lot of our elected officials that that's the preference. So here is the corridor. I'm going to have you look at the left, the left map. You can see there's areas that are blue and areas that are green. And the areas that are green are the areas that experience the most congestion right now. So if we aren't able to get our full funding from the FTA that we anticipate, those were the areas that would see the, the BRT enhancements first. But we will continue to build out the corridor as funding becomes available. And these are our partners. We have had a really robust engagement with all of our partners, which sometimes you can see that, you know, participation in the technical advisory kind of wanes off, but we're going strong. And another thing that we really love about this corridor is that it touches so many educational institutions, going from downtown where you have, you know, University of Washington and Evergreen and Bates. And then you continue to go down, you have PLU, and then you have all the elementary, middle, and high schools along the corridor as well. And we know that we really appreciate our strong relationship with the Tacoma School Board and the Orca Pass program that we share. And we just really look forward to a strong partnership with that. And that is what I have for you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Director Winskill?
Well, I just want to say that I am a frequenter of Pierce Transit, and the people who work, who drive the buses are so friendly and so, and a lot of good customer service there. And I've always been pleased. I know all the routes.
That's wonderful, thank you. I'll pass that along. They are wonderful.
Any other comments? Well, we just thank you for the update and for keeping us in the loop with what's going on and how the planning is progressing, and look forward to, what was the date, 2022?
2022.
2022, we look forward to 2022. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we will move on to item number seven on our agenda, members of the public wishing to address the board. So school board members encourage public participation. Your inputs appreciated. If you'd like to address the school board, please follow these steps. First, complete a citizens' request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the board. Please speak into the microphone, and you'll have up to three minutes to share your comments, and you'll get a one minute, a ding will go off when you have one minute left.
First speaker is Jessica Bricksick from Next Move Internship. That will be followed by Erin Wilson.
Good evening, can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Bricksi. I am a senior at Stadium High School, and I'm here on the behalf of Next Move Internship Program. I've been fortunate enough to participate in the program for the past two years of my high school experience. And last year, I was able to work with Catholic Community Services in their Fund Development Department and helped facilitate their annual auction, where we were able to raise a lot of money for their cause, and it was an amazing experience. And actually, that connection also led me to this year's internships, where I have been working with Washington Lifestyle Homes, and they have actually offered me a position there after graduation. So I do have a job over the summer and for the next year, as I attend TCC. So I just would love to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart for this program. I really, really appreciate it, and I know that a lot of other students in the Tacoma School District really appreciate it as well. It's an amazing experience, and it's something that I wouldn't trade ever. It, I know this sounds very sappy and very forged, but I always, I always encourage this program on anyone that I speak to because it has been such a learning experience for me. And I've grown so much morally, professionally. I had no idea what the professional world was going to be until I walked into it, and I would not have known until I got out of college if I hadn't had this experience. So I just wanted to come and thank you guys. And yeah, I just really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Erin Wilson, followed by Amy, I'm going to try it, Amy Pezenowski.
Uh, thank you, board, for letting me speak. I'm Erin Wilson. I work at Bryant Montessori, and I know what you're thinking. You're thinking, uh, who let the rodeo clown in to speak? Or you're questioning my fashion choices? I don't, I'll give you that. I'm kind of thrown off, actually, because Danavian, who was here earlier, is a product of Bryant, and I'm very proud to see him get that award. Thankfully, we got some footage for him. There's some Bryant teachers back there who are very proud of him. He was not my student, so I can't brag about him personally. I've done a lot of things in my life. I came to teaching later in life. I stayed away from it because I had a teacher, teachers in my family who always said, oh, complained about the bureaucracy and the hassles and the paperwork, the lack of respect and so forth. So when I graduated in 1992 out of UWT Tacoma, I went into the private sector, and so I've done almost everything you could think of. I've been, you know, I've come home with fish guts in my hair. I've overhauled fish processing machines. I've been a community information coordinator for a company that when they went public on the stock market, started the tech bubble crash of the late 90s. That was a bar company, WorldPages.com. Don't remember them. Anyway, I've done car sales, I've done advertising sales. I've done it all. And I got to tell you, I've done accounting, you know, all that sort of stuff. I've never been in a job where you're required to be so on all the time. It's a very unique situation when you're a teacher. And I love my job. I'm really not here to complain about anything. I'm really here to tell you that, thank you. I love working for Tacoma Public Schools. But I really am here on behalf of my fellow teachers, especially the career people who have been here for 20 years of their lives, 30 years of their lives. And I'm amazed at how they could do that because honestly, it's a stressful job. And I'm a loyal person. I've been married for 25 years. The company I loved to work for the most was, I worked for it for about 11 years. And if I like what I'm doing and I feel like I'm respected doing it, and I feel like I'm a valued person, I stay there. And I'm sure that's true for a lot of people. But I was talking, I talked to teachers who are younger than me, and I was just talking to one today at the end of the school day and asking her if she was coming back next year. And she doesn't know. She hears about other districts paying more. She doesn't know, there's other issues too, I'm sure involved. But, you know, I've seen young people who are half my age practically, I'm 49. And they're already burnt out. And it's a tough job. It really is. I love it. I think every day I do it. Seeing kids like Danavian, that's what you do it for. And I've learned from all these teachers here.
So your time.
Yeah, I heard the buzzer. And I want to tell you that they deserve a raise. And what I think you're going to do, and I think you know this, is you're going to give them a substantial raise this year. And I know there's the, the deal making.
Sir, I'm sorry, I have to hold you to your time.
Oh, sure, sorry, was that it?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, sorry, I thought that was the buzzer for the minute, sorry.
Thank you.
Amy, followed by Michael.
Hi, my name's Amy Pezenowski. I live in the Bose area on the east side of Tacoma. And I'm here because I was asked recently to be on the Design Advisory Committee for Bose. And we've had one meeting, and with one meeting, I have a major concern. We were told that in the DAC that we could not bring our feedback on certain issues to the next meeting. So you only have your one hour to talk, one hour to give feedback about only what they're discussing that day. You can't bring it back. So my major concern is safety on the east side, especially in regards to L Street. The school, what was submitted, and there's a map, they're talking about putting a couple streets through and changing where the entrances go. We have no sidewalks in our area. Our area, we have such a speeding problem. I've been on the east side council before. We put in speed bumps through innovative grants, and still doesn't fix the problem. Where the proposed new entrance or exit would be, off 68th and L, currently, there's ecology blocks there. And they have been hit by head-on collisions so many times, and each time, it's a battle getting them moved. So my concern is this is going to be somebody, I mean, a bit, you know, it's just a safety concern. There's also in that area, there's an unmarked alley that somebody has, somebody totaled my car coming out of it, onto L Street. There's no sightlines, and I've worked with the city, and there's not enough accidents for them to do anything about it. They won't put signages up. Catherine Nuska has been down there with me. She's seen how bad it is, and she has sent emails, but nothing happens. And I guess my last thing would be concern of coordination with the city and the school district working together to get what needs to happen at the school. Prior, our road is being paved right now on L Street, and we had asked the city to not pave the road until we knew what the school district's plans are, so roads aren't being torn up, you know, a year and a half later. And it's going to be paved tomorrow. So a big concern on just kind of everybody working together to get this school done as safely as we can. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Michael, followed by Heather Moreno.
Hi there, I'm Mike Refault. I'm batting cleanup for Amy. I live in the Hope Heights neighborhood, just adjacent to the Bose neighborhood. Approximately half of our neighborhood goes to Bose. So I'm concerned more on the 64th Avenue, 64th Street side. 64th Street is going to be redone approximately at the same time that Bose is going to be rebuilt. Those are going on at the same time. Currently, 64th is just a car death trap. But I'm afraid that after it's paved, it's going to double the traffic going down that road. And I'm just concerned that the school board, that schools and the city aren't talking. Since you're both going to be building at the same time, you know, a little coordination would go a lot of way, a long way into making, making it safer for the students. Right now, the crosswalk across 64th isn't really located in the proper place. And with how they're talking about rerouting traffic, it's going to be even worse for the kids trying to, trying to get back to their homes. So I had those concerns. Just wanted to say, we're really excited that Bose is going to finally get torn down and rebuilt. It's way, way past due. And, and the plans are looking really great, and we're very excited about it. You know, there's a few, a few concerns. Our community garden's probably going to have to be relocated. The school boards, the school, the planners are talking about moving our community garden into the school grounds. Might be a little complicated, but we're, we're more than willing to work with the school board on that and, and move our community garden into the school grounds as well as our little free library that, that the Bose neighborhood has done. Like I said, I'm just batting cleanup for Amy today, and I just want to thank, thank the board for their service and conclude my comments.
Madam President.
Yes, Director Hines.
Superintendent Santorino, would it be possible to get maybe in a Friday report, a synopsis of what's occurring communication-wise between the district and the city so we can better understand? Encouraged to hear that, well, now council member, formerly Director Nuska, has been out there. I would think she would help us with, to ensure that we're adequately communicating on the project, but just to make certain that we are in communication. If there's traffic issues on the 64th Street side and the 68th Street side, we want to coordinate and de-conflict so we're not creating undue problem and undue cost.
I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Viall?
Having worked at Bose Elementary a number of times over the last few years, 64th has been a bad street for a number of years, as has 68th. And I think the faster we get on that with the design, making sure that safety, pulling out of the street onto 64th from where Bose is now is, is really an adventure. And so, and I agree with that crosswalk. I don't know why that was put there. It doesn't make sense. So I think those traffic, Chris, if you could give, I know that you're probably working on that, but make sure that we are coordinating and superintendent with all of the traffic alignment. Sometimes we don't, they do things without talking to us, and if we can get on that, because that school is located in an area where you've got two major streets, and they're narrow, and people don't want to go Seventy-Second or Fifty-Sixth, so they come and go from McKinley down to Pacific on that street in shortcut. And we have kids crossing that street all the way up and down. So it is a real safety hazard. I can personally attest to it, having done crossing guard duty out there a couple times.
Chris.
We can definitely provide information in Friday report. I will tell you that our consultant on the Bose Elementary project has a standing meeting every Friday with the city. So coordination is, is pretty strong and thorough. But I can provide additional information tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll resume public comment.
Heather?
All right. Hello, my name is Heather Moreno, and I appreciate this conversation about safety. I feel like I do represent the most vulnerable students in our, in our schools, right? The special ed students. And so I'm speaking about compensation and teacher retention, because I, like my fellow students here, I am passionate, I love my job, I just want to be able to afford a living, right? I have a small house on the east side that I'm like, what am I gonna do this summer to try to make some extra money to keep, you know, to keep my house? So, and I'm also very concerned about my paraeducators. So we have some amazing people working for us, and I have one who just became a single mom, and now she's like doing this alone with a para salary. And I did a quick research, it was Indeed dot com brought me teacher salaries in Federalway versus Tacoma, and they were three dollars more in Federalway. And our, our building at Northeast Tacoma is, you know, right by Federalway. So it's like, I want to retain these amazing, passionate people who work with our most vulnerable students. So that's my plea, is to make sure that our money goes to our educators, because we are at the ground level, working with, you know, working with the students. So, thank you.
That concludes our public comment for the evening. So we will move on to item number eight, consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
I move adoption. Second.
Any questions about items on the consent agenda? All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Moving on to item nine, policy matters. There are none tonight. Item ten, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org, then to about, and then on to finance. Item eleven, curriculum and instruction. There are no curriculum and instruction matters tonight. Item twelve, business matters. Twelve point one, approval of contract for district furniture, fixtures, and equipment.
The chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors approve the superintendent to negotiate and award a contract for securing the purchase of furniture, fixtures, and equipment from McDowell Cray as needed.
I move approval. Second.
Are there any questions or comments about this item?
I, I just appreciate this approach, especially when you look at the cost savings and on the furniture up to fifty percent, when we know that we've got capital budget issues and every dollar counts. Thank you for scrutinizing the budget and bringing us forward more competitive bids. Sometimes when we do, this is often attributed to Albert Einstein, doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results is the definition of insanity. And we had for so long taken that approach with these sorts of purchasing items, and with all the schools yet to be built. I'm interested to see the cost savings that we'll be able to obtain. So thank you for putting this before us this evening.
Any other comments? All those in favor of adopting the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item thirteen, other business matters. There are none tonight. Item fourteen, report to the board. There are no reports to the board tonight. Item fifteen, individual board comments or reports. Director Viall?
Thank you. On Tuesday night, I had the opportunity, along with Director Wenskill, I was there and Superintendent Santorno, to attend the pass and review at sunset. That has been a, for twenty-one years, that went on in our school district at Stadium with all of our junior ROTC units and many from outside the district. And then last year, there was a change in command at Stadium, and we didn't do it. And I mentioned to John Page, our director CTE, who had J ROTC put under him along about last February, and said, you know, we really need to do that again. He said, yeah, we do. And he talked to Colonel Neely, who runs the Marine Detachment, JRTC at Wilson, and Colonel Neely stepped up and said, yeah, we'll do it. So on very, very short notice, they were able to put that together, and they got the band from, ICOR band came from Fort Lewis. We had all of our units. We only had one outside unit this year from Bethel, and that was because of the calendar scheduling and people not having on it the first of the year. But ROTC is a great program for a lot of our kids, and one of the highlights was Colonel Neely honored one of the retired colonels, US Marine Corps pilot, Colonel Swally, who had flown Hellcats in the battles of Iwo Jima and Okinawa for his service during World War II. And he presented him with a flag that had flown on Mount Serapachi, who is the infamous flag that was at Iwo Jima erected by the Marine Corps after one of the bloodiest battles in US history. And then also, he gave him a letter thanking him for his amazing service, an outstanding service, from none other than the Joint Chiefs of Staff. So anyway, great work on their part. Yesterday, Superintendent Santorno and I were both there. Degrees of Change, which is now the renaming of the National Leadership Foundation Program, was a, the Act Six program, a great fundraiser, and they're talking about a new program in which they're going to pilot to have more kids get involved. It will be with TCC, a connection between, start at TCC, follow them through the University of Washington Tacoma. So I'm looking forward to seeing what, how that comes out. So those were some two really positive, kind of fun things to do this week.
Director Wenskill?
Yeah, so last Saturday, I read in the paper that Lincoln was doing a play. So I went. It was Sister Act. It was very, very good, very enjoyable, and different than what I expected. Brought me back to my Catholic education, all those nuns jumping around the stage. Then I have kind of a request to look at something. So I, I went to Truman today, and many of the teachers told me that their SMARTboards were not working. Now, I think that what's happened is that they're discontinued and we can't find parts. But I would really like to know what is the, going forward, what we're going to do to replace them, and what's the plan? I told them we had a, a plan for technology, but I don't really know what's in the plan relating to SMARTboards. So to hear about that later would be good, yeah. And some of them have been without them for months, so, thank you.
Thank you. Director Heinz?
No reports this evening.
Student Board Member O'Halloran, do you have a report tonight?
No, nothing to report.
Okay. And I don't have anything to report either. So we will move on to item sixteen, announcement of future board meetings. So the board will meet on Thursday, May seventeenth, at six PM for a study session, and I believe the focus is on, it's still to be determined.
Safety update.
Okay, we, that's what I thought, but I wanted to confirm. We will meet for a study session for a safety update. And Thursday, May twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, we will meet at six PM for our regular business meeting. So we will move on to item seventeen, and we do have an executive session tonight. The board will meet in executive session for about twenty minutes to review with legal counsel. Chief Financial Officer and the Director of Purchasing Contract Performance of a publicly bid contract because public knowledge of such considerations would likely cause increased costs. So with that, we will break to executive session.